But these little cracks were bothering my perfection sun, so catch your breath.
Good evening, I'd like to call this Thursday, January twenty fifth, meeting with the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order. Please rise and join me for a flag sweep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With General Counsel, please call the board.
President Cobb?
Here.
Vice President Viall?
Here.
Director Winskill?
Here.
And Director Heinz?
Here.
Item number four, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move adoption, second.
It's been moved and seconded, are there any comments on that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item number five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Five point one, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Julia Hernandez, GPS volunteer.
Good evening, I'm Amanda Scott-Thomas, the Director of Community Partnership Office, and it's my pleasure to be with you all here today. So thank you Board of Directors. I am here to celebrate some community partnerships with the Gold Star Award. We have two partnerships to recognize tonight. We weren't with you in December, so we're going to be recognizing our December Gold Star Community Partner, and we're going to be recognizing our January Community Partner. So for the month of December, or actually the month of December, we're going to be celebrating Julia Hernandez. The partnership award was established to recognize that partnerships between communities and schools is very important, and partners are committed to supporting student success and the success of the whole child. We know that our partners in our community invest in the education of our young people, that our youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in our entire Tacoma community. So for your recognition today, we want to talk to you about Julia Hernandez. It was in two thousand fourteen that Tacoma Public Schools hosted its first Family and Community Learning Academy at McCarver Elementary School. It was my first year at TPS, it was an exciting year. We did this in partnership with the Peace Community Center and the Tacoma Housing Authority. Tacoma Public Schools Family and Learning Community Academy is a free event, open to the entire community. It provides educational and informational sessions for parents from all backgrounds to help sharpen their skills in assisting their children to succeed in school, something that we do to this day. And Julia joined the original design team and helped create the Family and Community Learning Academy. It was done in collaboration with our community. She has volunteered and was a volunteer leader at every annual FCLA since two thousand fourteen. And Julia not only volunteered herself, but she bought her entire family with her. Julia's sons and even her husbands engaged in the hard work of pulling off a community event. Julia has assisted in every aspect of the event, from planning it, setting up to take down, doing outreach, as well as offering her expertise and experience with parents by assisting in sessions and translating when necessary. Over the years, she's specifically provided a lot of support to our Spanish-speaking families. When the partnership office calls, Julia answers. And she continues to answer, and we appreciate her commitment, her passion, and her continued support to our community and to our students and the families here with Tacoma Public Schools. And today, we just wanted to invite Julia to be recognized and honor her for her volunteerism, so would you give her a hand, please?
I just want to thank God for this privilege to work for the Tacoma School District. I've met Ms. Toro, Carla, a long time ago, when I was at Geodrome, working with the ISS students. And through my time here with the Tacoma School District, it's just been a privilege to see a lot of my kids graduate, go to college, and just, you know, just have that experience that I can be of help to those, you know, in need. And so I thank all you guys for the privilege to be here, and, you know, I just hope I can keep on being a difference for our community. Thank you. Thank you again. Okay, item number five point two, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Office Depot.
Awesome. All right, committed to learning is more than a slogan for Office Depot. It's a pledge that they bring to life in every community, in local communities across the country. Steve Cowkins, the Executive President and Business Solutions Division for Office Depot, says that together with our partners, we are listening, learning, and enabling student success in school districts across the country. Not many people know that Office Depot has a whole education division, and they really do support local schools. It was in two thousand seventeen that a local Office Depot on Nineteenth and Union partnered with Tacoma Public Schools Partnership Office and the Department of Early Learning to host two in-store, interactive, early learning events, serving about a hundred Tacoma Public Schools families. The purpose of the event was to provide opportunities for pre-K through fifth grade TPS students and families to learn together in community. So at the store, Office Depot has a whole line of educational products, and we used a few of those in our learning events, or the learning stations, such as the sprouting councils. We did a sprouting council activity where they made councils, it was a science and engineering-focused session. We did painting rocks, so we did a little art there. We did math sticks and Jack and the Beanstalk. We did more math, we did some robotics, and then technology and color. So we had, the kids had fun with tablets, so it was STEAM-focused events where we were able to bring community partners together to facilitate the day, it was a lot of fun. Children and parents left with a certificate of completion from Office Depot. We'd have goodie bags and a booklet containing fun STEM activities that they could do together at home. And it's with sincere thanks that we present our Gold Star Community Partner Award to Office Depot, and we look forward to partnering with them for more events in two thousand eighteen. So we have Anthony, who is here from store eight ninety-four, let's welcome him.
Wow, what an honor, serving this community. It's a great privilege of mine to work with the Tacoma School Districts, and I thank you for this, it's very nice, thank you.
I want to thank both of our community partners, it's just great to have such, it's great that our community just wraps around our kids, so we just really appreciate both of you. So moving on to item number six, members of the public wishing to address the board. School Board members encourage public participation, your input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, please follow these steps. First, complete a citizens' request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the board. Please speak into the microphone, you will have up to three minutes to share your comments, and you'll get a one-minute warning.
There are no citizens that have requested to speak today.
That happened last time, too, you get all the way to the end, and you're like, okay, we're gonna get the comments, well, thank you. Item number seven, superintendent's report, and tonight we have a legislative update.
So this is just a brief report to the board and to our public. The legislature is in its third week of this two thousand eighteen legislative session. The session is scheduled to last sixty days and to adjourn on March eighth. And so indications so far is that they're gonna complete their work by this date and not do any extra sessions. If you think about the legislative, she laughed, we may have to laugh about that, but that's our plan. The legislative agenda put forward by Tacoma, we feel like is really being addressed, especially the following items. One, local levy reform proposals are contained in at least five different bills, and all the suggested changes would be beneficial to the district. Another bill, six four eight three, which was introduced by Senator Conway and co-sponsored by Senator Darnell, addresses the shortfall in special education funding from the state. It would increase the special education funding factor to a level that would address the special education funding shortfall in all school districts, including Tacoma School Districts, so we're really excited about that. There are several bills that address the need for more flexibility in categorical funding through the Learning Assistance Program, LAP, and K-three class size, and the proposed modifications would be helpful to the school district. The Senate Education Committee asked me to come and testify last week, it's been a couple of weeks, at a work session regarding the impacts of the education funding bill, House Bill twenty-two forty-two, and that work session has gone very well. And then the committee also had a hearing on the various education funding bills on Monday, and Rosalyn went down and testified. And we also know that Karen has been invited to come down next week to give the board member perspective. So we're well-represented, and people are asking us to come and talk about our position. The capital budget has been finally adopted and signed into law last week. The bill includes an increase in school construction assistance program funding, and that even though the funding is still lower than the actual cost of construction, the legislature seems like they are at least acknowledging that they know it's a problem and are gonna consider addressing it. Finally, the Senate heard a bill that would allow school districts to transfer birth to age three disabled persons tracking to the Department of Early Learning, so that takes a big burden off of our Student Services Department. Details of the bill are still being worked out between OSPI and the Department of Early Learning and the Governor's Office. Our own Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Jennifer Troffler, has really been behind the scenes working on this for a long time, so we appreciate that. There's other bills that address some of our legislative priorities, and hopefully we'll see a few of them make it through the progress, process. But just know, we are, what do you say, cautiously optimistic. Good? Cautiously optimistic about what might happen in this legislative session, so, thank you.
Thank you. Your comments from members of the board?
I'm gonna be testifying in house ways and means, next Wednesday at three thirty. Chairman asked for me to come.
Superintendent Santono, do you have any, do you remember, or did you get any questions from the Senate, Early Learning, K-twelve, or which committee was it in?
It was Education Committee, and it was governed by Senator Rolfes, which is Ways and Means also. I got one question. Ms. Santono, are you telling us that your graduation rate has gone from fifty-five percent to eighty-five percent? Eighty-six? And I said, yes, sir, it has. That was the only question.
That was it, that's great.
Can I ask the follow-up, Ms. Vidian, did you get any questions when you were?
Yeah, I had one question on the levy that they asked, just whether or not our levy request, if we were to receive the twenty-five hundred dollars, plus the state's taxes, would put us in a situation where taxes would increase or decrease, and it's a very moderate reduction in our taxes.
Okay, thank you.
They actually asked that question, Rosalyn, if you remember, you gave them the right number at your thing, Carla. They asked us that, would our taxes go down, and what were the rates in? And we, you know, explained that we also were asking for the tech levy, you added that in, I think it was about a dollar reduction without the state. I guess what you told them, if I remember correctly.
Without the tech, yeah.
Yeah, without the state additional taxes. Am I right?
Yeah, I wasn't, when you referred to a dollar, I wasn't sure what you were getting back to, the state's portion is about a dollar.
Yeah, from the four down to the, yeah.
I'm just not tracking well, sorry.
That's all right.
Any other comments? Nope, okay. Moving on to item number eight, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move adoption, second.
It's been moved and seconded, are there any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion is adopted. And going on to item nine, policy matters. Nine point one, second reading and adoption, new policy number twenty-three twenty-five, school gardens.
The General Counsel recommends that the Board of Directors adopt policy twenty-three twenty-five, school gardens. This is a new policy, this was a policy that the legal department has worked very closely with Maintenance and Operations. I'd like to recognize Deputy General Counsel Heidi Maynard for her tireless work on this, and also really thank you to Michael Nack, our Sustainability Manager. Both are here tonight, and they worked very, very well on this. I think it was nearly not long after I joined us a year ago that Director Heinz asked us to look into this in response to public comment, and this second reading now takes into account community feedback, board feedback, as well as additional legal review.
I move approval.
Any comments?
I just want to make the comment that a year ago you heard things, but we've been hearing them for about four years, so this is great to finally get it done.
Director Heinz?
I have one question, and I appreciate all the good work that we've done into this. Can kids eat what they grow in the garden?
Yes, Deputy General Counsel Heidi Maynard has worked to draft a specific consent form so that if the parent consents, their child may eat.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, that's great. Any other comments? All those in favor of adopting item number nine point one, the policy for school gardens, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item nine point two, second reading and adoption, new policy number thirty-one twelve, social-emotional learning.
And the General Counsel also recommends that the Board of Directors adopt policy thirty-one twelve, social and emotional learning. This is also a new policy, and this is the second reading, which also incorporates community and board feedback. If there's any additional questions, I know that Deputy Superintendent Garcia is here to support that.
I move approval, second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Going on to number ten, quarterly financial update. Presentations on financial health for the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org, then to About and Finance. Item eleven, curriculum instruction, there are no items tonight. Item twelve, business matters, there's also no business matters tonight. And then item number thirteen, other business, thirteen point one, approval of grant proposal, social, emotional, and academic development, a student success digital dashboard to the Stewart Foundation.
The Deputy Superintendent recommends the Board of Directors approve the submission of the seed grant proposal in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to the Stewart Foundation, and if awarded, approve expenditure of funds according to the accepted guidelines, funding source, Stewart Foundation.
I move approval.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have some. What exactly is that going to look like?
The exact design is, has not been established, and so what this-
I guess what I'm asking, what is your thoughts of what that will look like, because I talked to someone today about that.
So it would be a pre-K through twelve digital dashboard that allowed students to archive their work in order to demonstrate mastery in a badging system for social, emotional, and academic development. And so students could get a badge for taking an AP class. Students could get a badge for responsible decision-making in third grade, and so there'd be a continuum of there. We are in the works of partnering with Microsoft in new technology to design that. A special shout-out to Courtney from the Grants Department, Ryan from the Project Management Office, and several others that have been working on the conceptual designs. We had some conversations with Microsoft recently about new technologies. They do not know of a school district that has moved in this direction, to this comprehensive level, and they acknowledge that we are positioned to do this because we have an extremely robust data warehousing system that would allow this. And so the general premise is there is this, that students would be able to earn badges, students would be able to demonstrate what they have learned, and students would build both intrinsic and extrinsic motivation throughout the process.
Oh, follow-up question to that, this has been something I've been thinking about for a while. Will this help us, because one thing that's bothered me is I don't see a real nexus now of achievement, the level of achievement to social, emotional growth. I know we think it's there, but I really want to see a quantification of that about, does a student's emotional and social growth raise their academic achievement? And it's something that I've been thinking about for a while, because the two need to go together, and yet, in my mind, we haven't coupled them yet. And I'm thinking, I was wondering if this is the beginning of that nexus of that coupling, but maybe not, I don't know.
Absolutely it is, and so the idea of collecting data on students' social, emotional skill development. Now to be very clear, this system is designed for the students to demonstrate that, not for an adult to pass judgment on whether or not they have the skills.
I wasn't saying that.
I didn't take it that way, I was just, and so then we-
Because I want to clarify what I'm looking for. I'm looking probably for what Wallace is looking for, and is social, emotional growth improve academic achievement? And can we demonstrate that? And that's where I've not seen that nexus between those two tracks that we are on. And that's what I'm asking for us to begin to, I mean, we're spending a lot of money on both, and we're seeing results, but I want to, I want to see, I guess, a marriage of those two, because that's what we've been talking, one that we can actually see whether or not that actually does that.
We did have a limited study, and I'm sure it continued this summer, it was last summer, at the Girls and Boys Club, where the University of Washington worked with us and had a small-scale study, they looked at both things. They looked at number one, was there, you know, and it was a very simple evaluation, but they looked at whether or not the social, emotional growth of students were sustained over the summer, and did it correspond with their academic growth.
That's what I want to know, and, you know, we may do it anyway, people can grow socially and emotionally, maybe not academically, and that's something you want to have happen, but hopefully they come together. And I guess where I think we can do some seminal research as a school district in doing what we're doing is to develop a tracking and an ability to measure that and show that nexus between, so that other districts kind of look at us and say, oh, well, why are you doing that, that's not your job? And I've had that comment at Cube, someone said to me, well, that's not really your, you know, your thing for social and emotional, it's academic. But I would like to see us begin to, as we're building these systems, I mean, it's for the kids, but at the same time, to build a framework so that we as a board and we as a community can look at that, and as a board in our decision-making, as we move forward on this.
This platform will accomplish that.
Okay, thank you. And when do you think we will see that? I guess that's the other thing, I'm curious.
It is grant-dependent.
Okay.
So this is the submission, it would be a multi-year grant, and so you would not see the platform out for a potential couple of years.
Okay, I understand that, the design and everything that goes into it, thank you.
Are there questions or comments, Director Winskill?
So it's really hard to measure social, emotional, I think, but what we really want is our students to be mature, make good decisions, to grow as individuals. So this whole badge concept, I like, but I'd like to expand that to really looking at a lot of issues where they could earn badges, you know, like in Boy Scouts, you earn badges. So you could earn a badge because you are in Boy Scouts, or Cub Scouts, you could earn a badge because you're on a team at your school, and I think this whole thing with Metro Parks and the school-based teams is a great idea, and I really applaud that. Actually getting maybe middle-school kids to help coach students in elementary would be great. So I think if we really expand the badge concept to some of the things that the students are doing to enrich their lives would really be great, so I don't know if that is what your thinking is?
The proposal includes the opportunity for community partners to design badges and to honor what happens outside the traditional classroom as well.
Okay, so I want to just make one comment, because I've heard this from people who go to the middle schools for after-school programs, and they say that they'll, one week they'll have many students in their program, the next week they go somewhere else, the next week they go somewhere else, and they can't sustain the students. So to design a badge where you have like twelve weeks in one program and have follow-through, I think would really be good. It'd be good for the community partners to come in, and it'd be good for the students to stick with something, you know, because I think that's a really good concept to keep with the students.
It's an excellent point, the community partners and the schools in the Wallace Grant are calibrating the definition of dosage, and how much time students have to be in a program before they can count it at the elementary level, to measure the effectiveness of social, emotional learning. And so these grants will help build upon each other, but Director Winskill, yes, the clarity of definitions will need to be established as part of this work for each of the badges, including things like dosage.
Okay, thanks.
Director Heinz?
Yeah, I just offer, I think the value in social, emotional learning is those skills that we want kids to leave school with that are not measured on a standardized test like empathy and conflict resolution, especially in a global society, the ability for kids to get along, for them to understand that anger is a normal human emotion, but then taking that anger out in a clenched fist on somebody else's nose is not an appropriate way to channel it. And I think that the academic piece, if we can show even a tangential relationship, I think it's already proven that social, emotional learning is keeping more kids in school. They're coming to class, they're not getting suspended, they're in a better learning position. And the causation, I think over time may bear out, but I appreciate that we're truly trying to educate the whole child. And it was to Director Viall's comment, early on, I remember us having that conversation as a board, is it our role to help kids learn these skills? And I think absolutely in the context of kids coming into our school, we have the ability to set the expectation of how they interact with staff and one another, and what they're doing out in the community as representatives of the district, and this is pioneering work. So we're out there trailblazing, and we learn as we go, but I think it's important work, and I appreciate that we continue to look for opportunities to fine-tune and expand and get better.
I saw the student board members will taking lots of notes on this, so if either of you have comments, we'd love to hear them.
Is there some kind of like incentive for the older kids to engage in this?
We believe there's numerous incentives, but one of them is to create a digital portfolio. So when students transition to whether it's career, they would be able to have a digital portfolio demonstrating of different certifications and evidences that had been calibrated to better position them to compete for jobs. If they were transitioning into higher education, it would naturally serve as a way to support their application by showing, these are the words, I've demonstrated proficiency. And we believe that a more comprehensive approach, pre-K through twelve, will ultimately make them more competitive to their peers who may be doing things with just words in a traditional resume and not have the same level of evidence. We believe to build on some of the other ideas, that there's tremendous opportunities for even the business world to engage in industrial certifications where students could demonstrate that learning outside of their work. A badge for a career or a job, a summer job, all those different opportunities. So we're, I'm sure there's more there, but those are some of the initial thoughts.
So will it be something that's not required, it'll be just kind of like a resource for them?
That is what we are positioning it as right now, is that this would be a platform that students would choose to engage- Because that this would be a platform that students would choose to engage in, that there is no, not a thought of a requirement to participate. Now, there may be a lot of requirements naturally. For example, I'm required to pass my classes. I may get a badge for some of them.
I just was writing down, I think it's a really good idea. The whole badge thing, because I feel like kids, like if they're rewarded with things or if they see that they're like, people are like recognizing the good things that they do in their classes or like, if it's like, whether it's AP classes or like the accomplishments that they do and it helps them, like you said, like certain things like career paths and stuff, I think that's a great idea.
And if we're successful, we will be able to allow students to pick, to choose who they want to share when they receive those badges. And so there's an opportunity to automatically notify a mentor, a grandma, a, another friend. And so that that recognition can be supported by their network as well.
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. With the badge system, I assume, and maybe I'm wrong, that only students and maybe staff see which badges students have and haven't earned or what their badge collection looks like. Who has access to see individual students' badges?
So the, the, the correct answer is that has not been defined by the permissions yet. And so there will have to be discussions around there. The, the parent guardian would have access to that information. But our dream is to allow a student and a family to define a support network that can encourage, as well as the student can share their accomplishments with their network.
Okay, that makes sense. But not of, other students don't have access necessarily to other students' badge collection?
That has not been a part of our initial thinking at all.
And then is there opportunities for customizing the badges that are available? Like it's for, like for school communities to determine as a school community, we want to work, all work towards this kind of badge that they've identified to improve school culture or climate or just as a school-wide initiative. Is there flexibility for that?
The correct answer is it has not been determined yet. The, the, the initial thinking is that, that yes, there could be even school-wide badges that schools earn. Departments earn with staff and adult badges that are collected. So the first piece is to work out the technology and determine what that is. There is also the potential and the desire for students to create their own badges and the framework for those badges and be able to share that concept with other students to bring student voice to what kind of badges should be determined.
So I guess my more probably broad and more timely question is, is are there students currently engaged in the process of going from concept to reality and determining what this actually looks like in the end? Well, do we plan to engage students in the process?
So before we wrote the submission to the grant, we brought in, I believe, two to three focus groups of students at various age levels to talk to them about what would they want to see? Is this something that would even resonate with you? And we got an over resounding yes, this seems like this would be important to us. Things and comments like, it's important for me to be able to show the adults what I actually know without judgment. And so there's an opportunity for students to really bring their voice. And so we have done that. We plan to as we go through beyond the architecture of the actual platform, but more into the design to bring students back into that pieces for some of the subtle pieces. We didn't share any pictures with you because they are truly just concepts.
Thank you. And then my comments, I just want to echo Director Heinz's comments about this district's commitment to educating the whole child. And then for the, for the benefit of folks who are maybe at home and haven't had a chance to see the policy that we just adopted related to social emotional learning and who might not be familiar with the social emotional learning framework, I just want to read what the five kind of core elements of the framework include. So self-awareness, self-management, self-social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. So these are, as Director Heinz said, like parts of development that we do want all students to leave with. And to acknowledge Director Viall's comments about measurement, I do think it's great that we're moving forward in measuring what we can and linking growth in one area to growth in the other. And we do always keep academic achievement at the forefront. But we too all know that we might have a child who's knocking it out of the park in math who has struggles socially. So they don't always go hand in hand in terms of the direction of the growth. The student might really need to grow with regard to their relationship skills, but be great taking tests and can sit through class, but they need to grow in a particular area. So I think it's great that we link what we can and try to show evidence of growth, but also just keeping our commitment to, we know the needs of a whole child need to be addressed.
I'd like to clarify that I'm not opposed to the whole child. I was here when we started it and was one of the main pushers of it. I just want to see us do a measure either, and that goes back to something I talked about here a while ago about looking at qualitative measures versus quantitative measures. And maybe it comes from setting up one of the better university research offices at Evergreen State College when we had to measure qualitatively academic achievement and growth at that, back at that time. And I would just like us to be a leader in that. And I probably have seen whole child more than perhaps others where I worked in on this. And I, but I would like to also see if there is a tie to that for the future so that that is a, an ability for us to leverage that also in where we are heading. And to be a trailblazer and every job I've ever had, I've been a trailblazer and that where I see us all to have these opportunities. But, and I think I did say that some kids will grow socially and emotionally and don't academically. I mean, I had a social butterfly who had trouble academically because he was too busy growing socially and emotionally. And, and I think we all know that. But I, I would really, just for our own, as we move forwards, we can say to the community who will ask us, and I have asked, and several people have asked me, does that equate to academic achievement? I said eventually I think it does. And I said, you know, but I would like us to be able to draw some conclusions pro or not. And even if it doesn't, it's like when we went to the, you know, our inclusion model for special education and we've had kids say, this is the first time in my life that I have felt like a normal child. To me, if, whether it raised their academic achievement or not, that was something, that was a great milestone for us to do. But we also know that now it has raised, and that's what I'm asking for as we move forward. And if we're designing this platform, if there's something in there that can help us grapple with that and be able to address a child who may be academically growing, but not socially and emotionally growing. And it'll be in that, you know, will show us that hopefully in that platform. And then we can focus upon that at the same time. So that's where I'm coming from. And I don't want the impression at all that, because that is not the case. And I think all of you up here know that.
Yep.
And the community does. So thank you.
I totally heard that in your comments. And I think your piece about wanting to be a leader on this is great too because some districts aren't yet at the stage where they're supporting, where they've committed that.
Exactly.
So everyone's grappling with how do you measure? And so if we can be leaders on that, I think that's great.
And they can say to us, well, what does it do? And we can say this, this, and this. So that's where I'm at.
Any other comments on thirteen point one? All those in favor of adopting the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion thirteen point one is adopted. So moving on to item fourteen, fourteen point one, annual report on academic excellence.
Good evening, President Cobb, members of the board, Superintendent Santorno, Deputy Superintendent Garcia. Tonight, Assistant Superintendent Pace and I are here to provide you a report on one of our benchmarks under academic excellence, goal one. And that is the report on the percentage of high school students who have graduated on time, dropped out, or who are continuing. We've seen those blue numbers on the wall behind you. And so tonight, we're going to take you a little bit deeper into that data and what that data looks like. Last year, Tacoma Public Schools exceeded the graduation benchmark goal of eighty-five percent by 2020 with a percentage of eighty-six point one percent. As was mentioned earlier tonight, our graduation rate has increased nearly sixteen percent in five years. Sixteen percent incre- increase equates to approximately a hundred and ninety-one more students graduating from our comprehensive high schools. Our dropout rate continues to decrease over five years. From two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, we saw an additional one point three percent decrease overall of students who dropped out. And that would be equated by that red portion of the bar that says eight point nine percent. Eight point nine percent is equal to approximately one hundred and sixty-one students. We have five percent, which is the yellow portion of that bar by two thousand seventeen, who are continuing into their fifth year. And that equates to approximately ninety-one students.
So let's take a closer look at our subgroups regarding graduation over a four-year period. The following groups have met district, the district goal. Our Asian students at ninety-three point two are up from last year. Our Black students at eighty-five point one percent met the goal, but decreased by about point six percent. Our Pacific Islanders at ninety-four point seven percent are up from last year and making steady increases. Our white students at eighty-eight point two percent are also up from last year. And as you can see though, that our following groups have not met the district goal. Our Hispanic students at eighty point one percent, a small decrease from last year by a point eight percent. Our multi-students, seventy-seven point two percent are up from last year. And our Native Americans at seventy point four percent, a decrease of about five point six percent from last year. Going on to our next set of subgroups, our female students at eighty-nine point six percent exceeded the goal and are also up from last year. Our male students did not meet the goal at eighty-two point eight percent, but they are up from last year as well. Free and reduced lunch, eighty point nine percent, pretty much the same as last year. Our ELL students, eighty point, eighty percent up from last year. And our special education students at fifty-nine point two percent are down about a point seven percent. Our key findings, Superintendent Verhar and myself have covered a lot of this already in, as we reviewed the data. But we would like to point out that our Asian, Black, and white students continue to graduate at a percentage above the district average at eighty-five percent. And specifically, our Pacific Islanders increased by fourteen percent and ELL by sixteen percent.
So what are some of our next steps? The district and individual high schools continue to refine their systems. They continue to get better and deeper into who those students are, how do we help them recapture those credits, as well as how do we help students accelerate courses? We are in year two of our alignment efforts around the standards and we continue to provide focused support for our teachers through professional development. We also continue to provide professional development around culturally responsive teaching practices. We have our onsite instructional coaching, our new teacher support, as well as studio learning labs. Eleventh grade has been the accountability year for the Smarter Balance State Assessment. And that will change this year for two thousand eighteen to tenth grade. So accountability will change from the eleventh graders to the tenth graders. Our benchmarks have just been recently updated to reflect that state change. The one additional year will provide more time for our schools to ensure that the appropriate interventions are in place for students who did not meet the SBA requirement in tenth grade. Our data systems, as you heard a little bit about that tonight, continue to be refined and provide on-demand access to real-time data, which is updated hourly. Tomorrow is day-to-day. The DART team, under the direction of Director Zeke Edmund, are launching some new data warehouse systems in, so that kids or that teachers can see that data more quickly, much more quickly and more effectively. We continue to provide equitable access for all students as a result of our academic acceleration policy, programs, and curriculum that promotes strong instructional practices like AVID, College and the High School, and Spring Board, just to name a few. That concludes our formal presentation tonight. What questions can we answer for you?
Director Viall?
I've been, I was looking at how much the fifth year extended graduation rate has increased. That's, that's pretty impressive from two thousand thirteen, from sixty-nine to eighty-eight last year. And I know that there were some goals that were set by the Graduate Tacoma for that also. And what that tells me is that our kids are motivated, that got behind, and we're doing a good job of getting them back and getting that completed. So I think that's significant, you know, looking at the eighty-six and then an eighty-eight of the kids. I don't know what the N is for that number that maybe you do. I don't see it here. But how many of those kids, it actually, like you said, there were ninety-one that are continuing and I don't know what that number was for last year, but.
Right, I don't have that with us.
It's okay. When we, on these appendices, could you guys list the Ns for those again? So then we know what that percentage is. I know we've talked about that.
Sure.
Before, just put them in there, how many students that is? Because, you know, you said a hundred and ninety-one, so if it's another eighty or something, that's a significant bump in a two-year period for graduation for, I think, for us to be graduating well over two hundred kids in a two-year timeframe. And I think that's kudos to our principals, getting the kids to come back and complete, you know, their, their high school education.
Right.
Anyway, just, you know, I think that is a, to me, that's a pretty significant number, a pretty big jump from two thousand thirteen. As everybody has jumped in that, and that has also, yeah. So anyway, thank you. It looks good.
Thank you.
Director Wenskill?
I just have the question about the extended graduation rate and special ed. And are those included in those numbers, the students who can stay until they're twenty-one? Or is that a different category?
It is, they are considered in the next year, but after that, if they're twenty-one, then they are considered dropouts. So they move to dropout status after that extended.
I thought we were trying to remedy that with OSPI or the legislature or something. Are, are we still working on that?
We are still working on it. We've made attempts both at the state and national levels to do that. So we have some work that we're hoping this session can be implemented around funding sources. But it becomes, continues to be a challenge.
Thank you.
Director Heinz?
Well, first to Director Wenskill's question. When I was in DC in November, that was a topic that we brought up with the US Department of Education. So we're, we're trying to track it at the state and federal level. Because you're absolutely right, that's something that needs to be addressed. To the report, ELL, it's a pretty significant increase. Do you have any ideas about what has led to that increase?
There, there's been lots of effort from the department in providing professional development for ELL teachers. There's a, a district effort to certify more ELL teachers and get them better prepared. I just think it's, it's a lot of effort on the part of everyone to really focus in on, on quality teaching in the classroom. You know, I don't, I don't know of anything special about, you know, what, what they're doing except continuing to work hard to provide quality education for those students and identifying them and putting them in the right place. And there's also an effort, I know from, with Marie and her crew as well, to provide the same professional development for ELL students. So the same level of rigor, the same level of quality teaching is expected in those classes. And we just work at it every year and we collaborate more. And I think that's the, the end result.
Are we seeing a higher retention of ELL students?
I don't know. That's a good question.
Less ELL students dropping out?
We can bring you back that data in a further report.
I'd like to see that.
Okay.
If I may, one other quick comment, you'll, you'll see variance amongst subgroups, sometimes large variance. And that has somewhat to do with the N size on a given year. So a portion of the population will be reflected in the N size. And so it's not to dismiss that. We, we always look at three points of contact going in the similar direction for a trend. And so the power of the ELL story is, is you see a pretty significant trend going up. The, the, and I'm not saying this is the case, but this does explain some of the variance on different subgroups, such as Native Americans and this. On a given year, the N size may be larger for that adjusted cohort class. On a given year, the N size may be larger for that adjusted cohort class than it was the previous year. And so, or even the reverse, it may be less, and that smaller population has a larger impact on the percentage in that subcategory.
The multi-level too is another one to look at that kind of follows that same trend.
And multi-ethnic groups, students self-identify. And so over the course of the year, that's changed when the figure, regulations change and broke it down and packaged a bunch of students together and categorized. They, they identify whether they're Hispanic or they're multi.
Thank you. Have, have we been able, looking at slides ten and eleven about dropout? When students do drop out, are we able, I know some of those students we then entice back in. Oakland, Willie Stewart, other ways to get them re-engaged. Do we, is there any way for us to make contact with them to better understand why they've dropped out?
I don't know that we have a, a specific format to do that at this point. A lot of times, these numbers also reflect students who come back in and out. So yes, you know, I, I think the school does a, a, a good job of contacting the student and trying to find out why they suddenly are not coming anymore, why, you know, what are the other services they may be involved in or what we can provide for them. We don't have a specific procedure for that for, for every school, but I know that the schools do a really good job of trying to follow up when they can and trying to coax that student back in. And like I said earlier, these numbers reflect students that could come back in and out of the system.
Okay, and I, I think it would be interesting, and not even that we are necessarily responsible, but if there's, if there are partners, to try to better understand, and to Director Viall's point of qualitative data.
Right.
You know, the numbers are pretty low, ninth and tenth grade. But I sit here and wonder what compels a ninth or tenth grader to say, "I'm done going to school." And then students, you know, the numbers tick up in eleventh and twelfth grade, so you are, you're close to graduating. Why are you dropping out? As we try to, you know, for us, moving the needle from fifty-five percent to eighty-five percent has been significant, but it's going to get exponentially more difficult now. And those are the sorts of students that we're going to really have to better understand, why are you leaving Tacoma Public Schools? And is there, and there may be things we can do, and there may be things we can't do. There may be circumstances beyond our control that influence it, but I would be curious if there's a way that we can begin to try to capture that and help those kids to remove the barriers or provide services so that they stay in school and graduate. Especially when they have access to now world-class education in Tacoma. Just my last question, I was hoping to see graduation rates by school.
Yeah, me too.
Do we have that data?
Yes, we have that data. We're just reporting on the benchmark as it appears in the strategic plan, so we can certainly, you know, provide that information.
It'll be available in your hub tomorrow at the admin portal, and we will also, it's, it'll be available to the public tomorrow.
Okay, great.
So it'll be available online where they're able to break it down by school as well.
Excellent, thank you.
And region.
You're welcome.
I think part of the answer also to Director Heinz's question about, you know, are we asking dropouts? I know if you go to our high school principals and say, you know, and they know who they, you know, who they lost, that they've tracked them, so they know at, at least, you know, this one moved to Michigan and, you know, didn't, we couldn't follow up. So I, I bet if we ask our high school principals that they have a pretty close rate to why, you know, why students aren't still there. I mean, I mean, I've had several conversations, I know with Dan Bissett, he'd say, "Ah, lost one today, did this," and that, you know, he knows, they know. So I think that we have a better record of why they've left.
They also use an early warning indicator system. They start that at the ninth grade, so they're actually monitoring students, you know, right away when, when a certain indicator comes up, if they failed the class or they get a certain number of absences, they're calling that student and they're working with that student and putting a plan together to, to ensure that they keep them there.
They have spreadsheets, numbers, attempts to contact the family, they track social media. A portion of the students, and you've hit it, and there's diverse reasons for different ones. A portion of the students are, they don't, we can't find it all. A portion of them, as they get older, unfortunately, there isn't, they perceive it as there's not enough time to graduate for the gap that I need to close. And so you see those shifts, they may go to a GED program, they may have started employment. And so we, we are tracking some of that, but don't bring it to inside the data warehouse yet.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question but one comment related to this tracking of students. I know that there's a piece of legislation introduced this year that would allow more community and technical colleges to grant diplomas. And there was some discussion about some feedback data to, like, to update school districts' student information to reflect that student as a transfer, so that our system didn't keep it forever that they were a dropout, that there would be kind of that registration of a, after they finish that degree program, they'd feed back to our, our data systems as the student not being a dropout anymore.
Is that in addition, you know, Mark, but I do, about to the, the high school, for example, that Bates has? In other words, if one of our kids, then it would, okay, so they would just be, one of our kids then would be looked at as a transfer or they're not a dropout from TPS, re-enrolling at a community college or a technical college?
I don't know where that bill is now, but just related to this topic.
We've advocated that those students are no longer counted as dropout. The bill suggests, it's really, it's one that I appreciate is, is when a student has earned the certificate, they are, they should be counted. The subtlety though is, is that it's still counted against the public school system as a dropout. And so we are advocating that says, when the student has completed the work, it doesn't have to count as one of our graduates, but it shouldn't count as one of our, our, our dropouts. Because the reason why, just so folks know, is, is we really work hard to support the students. And so that means even if they want to go to a community college in a fresh start program and it counts as a dropout, our commitment is to help them be educated, not to worry about the specific number. And so our advocacy in that specific bill is, is yes, and remove that from the dropout status.
Well, thanks for that update. Well, my question about the, the report itself was looking at the trend for Pacific Islander students. I know that these changes are a result of lots of efforts on everyone's side, the students' effort, the educators' effort, and our community partners' efforts too. So in the specific case of Pacific Islanders, I heard some whisper about a partnership between the Asian Pacific Cultural Center, so I wonder if anybody can speak to the scope of that partnership and if it is likely impacting these numbers too? I mean, in what way it might be? There's lots of, again, things that are working towards this outcome, but what is that partnership?
We have a formalized partnership with the Asian Pacific Cultural Center on both mentoring and credit retrieval opportunities. And so they do culturally relevant activities, mentoring, engagement strategies, support systems for Pacific Islander schools, predominantly in three of our schools, but they reach schools all over, as well as serve as community advocates to help with case management opportunities, both to bridge what's happening in the school as well as what's happening outside the school. In addition to that, they provide summer school opportunities with some of our hardware and Edge Annuity. So as the kids are doing and giving back to their community at the Asian Pacific Cultural Center, they're also have an opportunity to work on schoolwork. They track their graduates, they have made very significant progress, and we are very thankful to that partnership.
Thank you. That's all my comments. Any other comments from the board?
Just on the Asian Pacific, the last two years, Lua has asked me to come and talk to their graduates. They do a little after we do graduation ceremony, and I know that, I know that Lua makes sure those kids show up and do what, what they are, you know, supposed to do, and, and there's tutoring, there's, anyway, it's a full service, a part of them and what we help them with. And, and it's, it's been amazing, and they're, you know, really a great partner. And I've been impressed just going to their little graduation thing, very similar to what we do at TCC with the powwow for our native kids. And so next, maybe I'll get her to ask you.
Thanks. Okay, item fif, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, board comments or reports. Start with Director Viall?
Comment I have, and Assistant Superintendent Verhar and I had the opportunity to go and, to your class at FAWSS and observe one of the rock star young teachers in, in, in the ELL, teaching the English Language Arts Program. Pronounce her name for me, will you please?
Wechi.
Wechi, and, Kayla Wechi, and it was an amazing class we sat through in the watching of the use of technology in effective instruction. There's no paper in her class, and everything is on the surfaces and in technology. And the kids were doing comparisons between Ibsen's Dollhouse and Blood Wedding, which are two novels that were written a while ago talking about transformation of women, particularly in society, about moving forward. And one, they both, one left husband and dead married for money and found out that was not, and became, was sort of a, a woman's empowerment thing, but the way in which the kids all kept, they worked in groups, the class is very informal, the kids are at tables, or they're on stools, or they're together, and they work in, and everything is on the computer. They can, if they get behind a little bit, you can pull that up, your work is all there. They can, they have like a conversation thing where they can share their, their things. And it was just amazing, to me, example of high-quality instruction, student engagement, and the really effective use of technology with a, a teacher that knew how to use it. And you get an opportunity, I know that, she said, "Anybody can come visit," and Ms. Ness would be glad to have anybody come over and, and take a look at it. For me, it's the first time I've had that opportunity to see that real marrying effectively of, of technology with, with instruction. And her, all of her learning targets, everything are there, the kids see, they know what's going on. And then they had to identify their, they had to, they had five, I believe it was five questions or four questions to answer, you can correct me, and the questions were about evidence of what conclusions you have drawn, find your evidence, and then back up your, and getting into the critical thinking aspects of it. And I know Marie and I both really enjoyed it, and I thank you for taking me along for the ride. And it, sometimes we sit up here in the board and we don't get that opportunity to see things in action that we approve, like the technology and, and all the PD that we send our teachers to. And this was eleventh grade IB English. And I tell you, I was, I was impressed, I was impressed with the, with our kids and their engagement. Even the one little kiddo that didn't want to be so much engaged, got engaged. He was, I think he had stayed up too late the night before, but, and it was only about one, and he, she got him engaged and got him moving. So student engagement, technology, and equating to high academic performance. So that's my comment, and I was, I was really, really privileged to be there, and it was just a great opportunity to see, see what we do up here translated into action in the classroom.
Thank you. Director Wenskill?
I went to the superintendent breakfast this morning, and one of the sessions I went to was Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and the regional director came down and talked to two different groups. And one of the issues that we need to tell our public out there is that they are in desperate need for men especially, they have a lot of women and girls, women who will mentor and girls who need mentors, but boys, there's lists and hundreds that need that and are asking for it. And they, right now, they're working at McCarver, Gray, and Baker. So if people are interested, and then they do the Boys and Girls Club, they do that after school too. So if people are interested, they should call Boys and Girls Club. That's it.
Thank you. Director Heinz?
Just to make you all aware, next Saturday, I'll be traveling back to DC as part of NSBA's, well, they used to call it the Federal Relations Network, it's now the Advocacy Institute. So a couple of days of conference sessions, and then Tuesday up on the Hill to meet with members of the congressional delegation. So I was happy to see the federal government, well, they're funded at least until February eighth.
When do you go?
Which, two days past when the conference ends.
Oh, great.
They should be open for business while we're there, which is good.
Oh, gosh, yeah, that would not be cool.
Snow again, and so then at the February eighth meeting, I'll give a report out on how that went.
Okay, thank you. I don't have a report tonight, but I just want the public to be aware that the Sammy Open House is this Saturday. It starts at eleven o'clock, so if you're interested in seeing the new Environmental Learning Center, you should bring your family down, because it's also free entrance to the zoo this day, so.
Eleven till two.
Eleven till two.
And, and I think that I've heard, I don't know if it's true, that the program starts at eleven?
It starts at eleven, the program starts at eleven.
Yep.
I think you're going to kick it off, aren't you?
I think so. I'll be there.
Yeah, I will be.
So please, it's a beautiful building, so it's a great community asset, so it's all of ours. So moving on, item six, oh, no, student members, do either of you have a report tonight?
I want to add on to what Vice President Viall said. Ms. Wechi's class has been a lot different for me this year because she has like couches and yoga balls like you saw, you can sit on, and the goal is really to just make the students comfortable, because the IB English class is, class is really discussion-based, and so you have to be kind of comfortable to speak your own ideas, it's not just kind of memorizing things, and I really appreciate that. Yeah, and so, and she also implements the technology, and that's really nice, because I am very bad at technology and using computers, and she helped us learn how to use Office three sixty, Office three sixty-five, which I didn't know how to use very, very well before, and it's just a really great resource for students. And, yeah, I'm just, I'm seeing a lot of great things from my teachers this year, and I really appreciate them.
Awesome, thanks.
I have no comments.
No comments, okay, thank you. So announcement of future board meetings, Thursday, February eighth at six PM, we'll meet for a regular business meeting. Thursday, February fifteenth, from three to six PM, we'll be doing interviews of candidates for our open position on the board. And then on Friday, February sixteenth, from three to four PM, the board will meet to debrief the candidate interviews.
And that will be an executive session.
Oh, sorry, thank you, that's an executive session. On Thursday, February twenty-seven, twenty-second, at six PM, there'll be a regular business meeting. And then Saturday, February twenty-fourth, from nine to noon, at the Tacoma Nature Center, the board will meet for a retreat. Moving on to item seventeen, executive session, and there is no executive session tonight, so that brings us to item eighteen, the adjournments, meetings adjourned.